I agree with Mike on Marilyn's take. She's done a lot of extra hours and not been able to take her vacation, so, thank you. And also, I agree with Mike on experience. We need somebody experienced, and we've got two that are experienced, and go with the best and work our way down.
Does anybody else have any questions or comments? Agenda item number 13, update on nuisance abatements. Dennis, do you want to give an update of what you guys have going on? I know you've got quite a few going right now, so...
We've got most of it. I think we've got three more, four more places to notify, and we've pretty well got everybody in place. Some of the work's getting done. We're cleaning up some alley places where there's junk in the alley, cleaning up some old cars. Everybody seems to be working with this so far, so we've got four more people to notify since everybody's in place.
Thank you, Chief. I know you've got something going on. Dennis, do you have something?
No, Elmer's done a lot of work on this, and we're working on quite a few places and trying to get it done.
We had received a letter from Mr. Eston Miller. I apologize to you. I did draft a letter for your, to return to you. I'm sorry I don't have that to you, but I will get it to you with some dates in it. I know that she's been down to talk to you, I believe, so I apologize for that, but I will get you that.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have anything, any questions about where we're at? Hopefully, as we're cleaning some of these up, it'll help other people remember to keep their stuff up, so they can keep looking clean and a great place to live.
And I would just comment, I know that I've talked, Randy, with you and Dennis, and then the chief as well, too, is that, you know, let's aggressively stay after it. Let's get it done, and let's clean our community up. So it's, you know, we're proud of our community today, and let's even be more proud of it. So let's get the community cleaned up.
Okay, thank you. Agenda item number 14, this is discuss Millamore Park cleanup. Mike, you'd want to put this on there to kind of talk about what we're doing with that.
This is something that's been on the agenda for a while and then taken off, and if my memory serves me correct, I believe that at the council's wishes, this has been some time ago, a few months ago, we tabled this until we went ahead and, what I remember, two things. One is, we wanted to, we couldn't do two projects at once, so we had to do the park project and the shelter at the park, which is done. And thank you for everyone that donated your time and effort. It's a beautiful structure. Secondly, we wanted to get the survey done, and I believe we now have the survey, and the survey's been done for quite some time, and there's stakes up. So we do know what the city property line is, and as long as we stay to the north and west side of that property line, we know we're on the city property. So what I was recommending is, is to give approval to the park board to go ahead and clean up Millamore Park as per their plans previously. It appears we only have one park board member, so it'll be a lot for Brittany. But the other side of that is, I've had numerous citizens come talk to me about cleaning it up as a community-wide effort. And I guess we have one park board member, which is Brittany, that could actually oversee and work with the council in getting that done. I would be 100% behind, let's move forward, and let's clean up Millamore Park, and let's, again, let's take this off the agenda and move on, so...
Any other questions or comments?
Danny and Dee were involved originally in that, those plans, and meeting with you, Randy, you were involved as well, so is that where you're planning on picking back up with that timeline and those points that were on that original?
Yeah, I don't remember for sure. They were our first timelines, mainly getting through, building that stuff. I don't remember, did we have anything for the fall? And then I'd have to go back and look at my email.
I think the agreement was to, once they had the survey done, they could finish clearing. I don't know, is Nikki here?
Yep.
Isn't that correct?
You've got that document that you wrote, Randy? Dust off, I don't have it with me either.
I don't have it with me either. I did think to go back and look at it. I know, because I remember it was to do the first bottom trail and restructure downtown, so I didn't remember if we had anything later in there or not, but I can look. Like you said, I think it was, we wanted to get that stuff done first, and then we'd go forward.
Yeah, we was gonna do the, we was gonna do the bottom trail and then work on the top one after the survey's done, so the survey's done, let's get it done.
I think for this, we're just looking at doing the cleaning, though.
Yeah, right.
Because we don't really want to, we gotta get the new park board on, you know, hopefully in two weeks, and then we can, that would be up to them to decide, and when the proper orders as to that information. Is that, we understand you why we want to go in and...
That's not, no, I want to do it now. I want, we have one park board member, she reports to the council, she can come to the council with the plan, and we just move forward as per plan. I think it was already agreed upon, like Dee said, or whatever, so I just think we go, we get it done. I mean, we're not spending any money.
I didn't know if we've seen a final on the top trail or not. I know that there was, let me go back and look at that, and we'll see if we pull that other information, so...
A few things were put before the cart before the horse, and a few instances, the trail was in before the survey was done, so some of those things were done out of sequence, obviously, but that being said, and it is where it is, yeah, I think there was a plan, a meeting with adjacent homeowners that was on there somewhere, and that, again, I assume that was follow the surveying and the determination of the property lines, which Mike says is twice. Has that been recorded? Do we have that, other than the stakes and the ground?
I don't know what's involved with surveys, how they record those things.
It's recorded at the courthouse. I believe that's the only thing that's necessary. It is recorded.
There we go.
All right, I see that's, that was done. The surveyor asked to do that.
So it's you, Dennis, and Dee, right, that work with, so I think you sat down with Brittany and looked at the plans and get going?
That's what I thought.
Brittany wants to get ahold of us, we'll set something up. Have a look at that. Agenda item number 15, this is identify a person who is lawful custodian, excuse me, lawful custodian of the city's public records. Yeah, we still have video, so... Well, we're about done with the regular part of the meeting, where we're looking at getting most of the minutes from anyway, so...
Do you need another one?
If we need to, we can ask Ray to borrow the video, or we can pick it up online and go from there. So, thank you very much. Okay, then, agenda item number 15 is identify a person who is lawful custodian of the public records. I know that Terry kind of wanted, asked to have this on there, so...
Well, with the need for, or the request for public records by several individuals in the town, which they are lawfully due, the city has some responsibilities in identifying what's called the lawful custodian of those records, which is found in chapter 22.1 of the Iowa Code of Regulations, which I have here. That section that you have actually is the next page, which is talking about the supervision of, but actually, what I want the council to do, which I don't think they have done yet, is, as I read here in section two on the definitions of the lawful custodian, it says, "Each governmental body shall delegate to particular officials or employees of that government body the responsibility for implementing the requirements of this chapter, and shall publicly announce the particular officials or employees to whom responsibility for implementing the requirements of this chapter have been delegated." And so, this evening, I would just like for the council to make that public announcement of who is the lawful custodian of the city records.
According to our ordinances, the lawful custodian is the city clerk, so at this time, it would be Marilyn. When we hand something over to our city attorney, he then becomes the lawful custodian of that information.
That is incorrect.
Actually, it is.
Per chapter 22, it says that the lawful custodian means the governmental body currently in physical possession of the public record, and the governmental body means the state or county or city township or school corporation or for legal subdivision. And so, your city attorney cannot be the legal lawful custodian, since he is neither an official or an employee of the city. So the only legal lawful custodian that you have opportunity to have is either Marilyn or any other employee of the city. So your attorney would not be a lawful custodian of the records. He has to have physical...
Yeah, I'm gonna have to get an opinion, because the way that I understood it, and I thought I'd seen something on, I tried looking at this today, and I thought I'd seen something earlier today, that if the lawful custodian gives it over to someone else that is appointed, that we've appointed, then that's, they become the lawful custodian.
Why would you designate somebody else to be the lawful custodian when you have someone that can do it? And it says that it has to be in physical possession of the public record. How can an attorney that's in another town be the physical, have physical possession of those records? Do all those records then go to him?
Not all records, no.
Then he can't, then by definition, he can't be a lawful custodian, like chapter 22, it's very easy to read.
I will read it again.
What's the point? What's the concern?
That you need to identify somebody as the, of the public record.
Is there documents or something you're not getting, or that you feel...
That's not the point. That's not the point. The point is that the regula says, "Each governmental body, which is you, shall delegate to particular officials or employees of that governing body the responsibility for implementing the requirements of this chapter." So I'm just asking you to do it. Somebody that is a official or employee, just designate them, but the city attorney cannot be, by definition, a lawful custodian.
Put that on the agenda.
I'd like for you to make that decision.
Well, I can address it from my standpoint. In the 12 years prior to this, when I was mayor, I know that the official custodian was the city clerk or neidra. Now, I know that from time to time, we have to use in the city attorney, but that doesn't mean, in my opinion, that then the custodian is the city attorney. It's still our business, our information, our record, and so it all stays within us. So I would suggest, Randy, you can look and get an opinion, but I would suggest it is the city clerk's role that would be the legal or lawful custodian.
You know, I haven't read it all, Terry, I apologize. But from what I was told, that once we give them a document that we want them to give, that they are the lawful custodian.
Who are you referring to?
If we give it to the attorney.
Why would you give that to an attorney? For just their opinion? That's fine, but that would then in no way change the person that's in control of that document at the city.
At City Hall.
At City Hall. That would in no way change the fact that she's still the custodian of that record. Now, she could ask for an opinion or whatever, but she's still the one that makes the decision as to if it's going to be released, or what's going to be released, and she has, and she's charged with that requirement to manage the chapter 23, chapter 22. So you can, you can ask, just like anybody else is asking for any other, any other guidance, but that doesn't preclude the fact that that city attorney has any, meets any definition of the custodian of the record. They may have a record of it, that's fine, but the custodian is the one that produces that record and maintains that record, and in the need of that, the public requesting that, would be the one to determine that it's going to be released.
Randy, are you getting confused with access to the information, i.e. if it's currently currently?
No, I don't think I am. Or I hope I'm not.
Again, all I'm asking is for the council to designate, as it says in the chapter, that is required by the governmental body to publicly announce the particular individuals or employees who are responsible for implementing the requirements of this chapter.
What I talked to the state of Iowa today, and what they said was that if our attorney wants to put a hold on any document, they must state the statute and what document's being held, so that the keeper of the book doesn't have to give that document out.
So we're talking about access to information?
Access, Dave.
This is the legal custodian we're talking about, but that's access.
Yeah, access, yeah. There's specific, and they're listed in the book as to what they have to say, is the reason that it can't be released. There's like 56 reasons of a certain article that can't be released, but anything other than that is obviously open, open record.
Randy, I say we take, I mean, having had this for less than 24 hours and currently not, we're only having some of this information, we'll get back to the agenda for next meeting to do that.
Could I interject? The council members don't have this book? This has never been that book like Mike has?
Okay, I thought we had those all when we all started, and I thought we...
So no council member's ever seen this book?
I've seen it.
You've seen the book?
It's online, the information's online.
Have you read it? Have any of the councilmen read any of it?
Yes.
Thank you. Copy. We got training from it.
Okay, so I mean, it's not, it's not a hard read, so I don't know why we can't make the decision tonight as to who the, I mean, it's just pretty straightforward.
If you guys want to vote on it, you can. Otherwise, I want to do some more research, that's all right with you, Terry. I understand.
You know, stop with that, all right? I don't think you should do it tonight, it's very easy to read. You do what you want to do, you usually do.
Did anyone have an update? No, no update this morning. Next agenda item is citizens' questions and comments. All right, yes, go ahead, Linda.
I have a question as to if there could be a better method for the microphone. I'm sorry, Linda Francis, 509 North Second Avenue, Logan, Iowa, saying it has been for seven, eight years. Okay, tonight, you just said you are not going to publish everything in the paper, which I'm cool with, except that. How does anyone outside of this room know that? How will they know to get ahold of you if they want you to continue to put it in the paper? Okay? And then the next question is, is there no way that we can have a microphone for every person and the person speaking and the mayor, so that we can always hear you? Because to add anybody that's in the crowd? Because tonight, clearly, you've called on, excuse me, the police chief, people in the audience, and if you are relying on the tape recording to go back to, you cannot hear what people say. It's, that's what you hear. Did they say this word or this word? So if you want to rely on that as your official document, then you need to make sure everyone can hear that, because clearly, people have spoken tonight without using the microphone. So I don't know what cost that is, but if we're not worried about an $8,000 attorney bill, and we're worried a $300 bill for the publishing, then we better make sure that we can have an official document that we can rely on. Thank you.
Yep, thank you, Linda. And Ray, Jean, and I did talk about that last night, looking into, I'm going to look into getting some more microphones for City Hall.
And do you have a contingency plan if the microphone goes out? And I don't just mean like electricity, but if their battery runs, do you have another battery on hand? Do you have the backup means for which to do that with?
We're actually going to look at getting additional corded microphones, so that we...
Okay, that's what I'm saying, that just needs to be part of the plan.
Yeah, we've got, I think Ray mentioned to me that we've got four jacks in here, so we're hoping to do it that way. Yes, Terry.
I'm Terry Todd in the 611 North Third Avenue. There's something happening this evening that kind of bothers me just a little bit. Here, I'd like for you to make that decision.
Well, I can, I can address it from my standpoint. In the 12 years prior to this, when I was mayor, I know that the official custodian was the city clerk or neidra. Now, I know that from time to time, we have to use in the city attorney, but that doesn't mean, in my opinion, that then the custodian is the city attorney. It's still our business, our information, our record, and so it all stays within us. So I would, I would suggest, Randy, you can look and get an opinion, but I would suggest it is the city clerk's role that would be the legal or lawful custodian.
You know, I haven't read it all, Terry, I apologize. But from what I was told, that once we give them a document that we want them to give, that they are the lawful custodian.
Who are you referring to?
If we give it to the attorney.
Why would you give that to an attorney? For just their opinion? That's fine, but that would then in no way change the person that's in control of that document at the city.
At City Hall.
At City Hall. That would in no way change the fact that she's still the custodian of that record. Now, she could ask for an opinion or whatever, but she's still the one that makes the decision as to if it's going to be released or what's going to be released, and she has, and she's charged with that requirement to manage the chapter 23, chapter 22. So you can, you can ask, just like anybody else is asking for any other, any other guidance, but that doesn't preclude the fact that that city attorney has any, meets any definition of the custodian of the record. They may have a record of it, that's fine, but the custodian is the one that produces that record and maintains that record, and in the need of that, the public requesting that, would be the one to determine that it's going to be released.
Randy, are you getting confused with access to the information, i.e. if it's currently currently?
No, I don't think I am. Or I hope I'm not.
Again, all I'm, all I'm asking is for the council to designate, as it says in the chapter, that is required by the governmental body to publicly announce the particular individuals or employees who are responsible for implementing the requirements of this chapter.
What I talked to the state of Iowa today, and what they said was that if our attorney wants to put a hold on any document, they must state the statute and what document's being held, so that the keeper of the book doesn't have to give that document out.
So we're talking about access to information?
Access, Dave.
This is the legal custodian we're talking about, but that's access.
Yeah, the access, yeah. There's specific, and they're listed in the book as to what they have to say, is the reason that it can't be released. There's like 56 reasons of a certain article that can't be released, but anything other than that is obviously open, open record.
Randy, I say we take, I mean, having had this for less than 24 hours and currently not, we're only having some of this information, we'll get back to the agenda for next meeting to do that.
Could I interject? The council members don't have this book? This has never been that book like Mike has?
Okay, I thought we had those all when we all started, and I thought we...
So no council member's ever seen this book?
I've seen it.
You've seen the book?
It's online, the information's online.
Have you read it? Have any of the councilmen read any of it?
Yes. Thank you. Copy. We got training from it.
Okay, so I mean, it's not, it's not a hard read, so I don't know why we can't make the decision tonight as to who the, I mean, it's just pretty straightforward.
If you guys want to vote on it, you can. Otherwise, I want to do some more research, that's all right with you, Terry. I understand.
You know, stop with that, all right? I don't think you should do it tonight, it's very easy to read. You do what you want to do, you usually do.
Did anyone have an update? No, no update this morning. Next agenda item is citizens' questions and comments. All right, yes, go ahead, Linda.
I have a question as to if there could be a better method for the microphone. I'm sorry, Linda Francis, 509 North Second Avenue, Logan, Iowa, saying it has been for seven, eight years. Okay, tonight, you just said you are not going to publish everything in the paper, which I'm cool with, except that. How does anyone outside of this room know that? How will they know to get ahold of you if they want you to continue to put it in the paper? Okay? And then the next question is... Okay, and then the next question is, is there no way that we can have a microphone for every person and the person speaking and the mayor so that we can always hear you? Because to add anybody that's in the crowd. Because tonight clearly you've called on the, excuse me, the police chief, people in the audience, and if you are relying on the tape recording to go back to, you cannot hear what people say. It's, that's what you hear. Did they say this word or this word? So if you want to rely on that as your official document, then you need to make sure everyone can hear that, because clearly people have spoken tonight without using the microphone. So I don't know what cost that is, but if we're not worried about an $8,000 attorney bill and we're worried at $300 bill for the publishing, then we better make sure that we can have an official document that we can rely on. Thank you.
Yep, thank you, and Ray Jean and I did talk about that last night. I'm gonna look into getting some more microphones for City Hall.
And do you have a contingency plan if the microphone goes out? And I don't just mean like electricity, but if their battery runs, do you have another battery on hand? Do you have the backup means for which to do that with?
We're actually gonna look at getting additional corded microphones.
Okay. That's what I'm saying, that just needs to be part of the plan.
Yeah, we've got, I think Ray mentioned to me that we've got four jacks in here, so we're hoping to do it that way. Uh, yes Terry.
I'm Terry Todd in the 611 North Third Avenue. There's something happening this evening that kind of bothers me just a little bit on sense, and I have to address Nick and Skip on this. Unfortunately, little Brittany Norby has inherited a task at New Mulligan Park. She and a group of volunteers evidently are going to go down and try to clean it up. Now, my problem is, three of the board people voted nay on putting six more people on the board. Now, to me, in my little world, that would be seven people cleaning up if you didn't have any volunteers. I guess my question to the three is, if nobody else shows up, can we count on you three to be there, do twice as much work? That's my question. And, I mean, it's corny, it's silly, but I'm afraid what we're seeing is, we're taking something like this, it's totally ridiculous, and this is the way our city's going. We're doing the ridiculous things, we're not doing what's important. I guess I feel sorry for Brittany. She's gonna have to do it all by herself. That's all I got to say. All right, there you go. Jim Edelman, 201 North Avenue. I actually have a litany of things that I would love to address. But I'm not gonna address them all. And the reason is, I'm gonna extend the olive branch to you guys that you just refuse to extend to the people who have served on the park board for years. So I'm trying to build that relationship here that Skip talked about, because I do agree with him, it has to start somewhere. So I'm just gonna comment on a few things, and I'm gonna try and keep it all positive. One, I want to commend Mike on bringing up Marilyn's compensation. I think she's taken on heavy load. I don't know, I don't know what, what we do for the police officer for sure, but I think there should be something, I mean, we should keep it the same throughout the city employees. So I think it would be good to investigate, even though I also want to be careful of the budget though. I mean, we have to keep all that, it's a tough balance right now. I was also gonna tell you, we went to a meeting in Des Moines with several state officials, the governor, the abusmen, several people, and the understanding that I came away with on the minutes was completely different than what I had understood. The minutes, according to what they told us, actually why we approve them, I don't know, because they're supposed to be printed prior to the next meeting. So you're not supposed to wait and approve them and then print them. If that's my understanding, I encourage you to consult state law and check in all this, because I know through this process, the one thing that's good is, we've all become better educated on state law. So, and their comment was, there needs to be just enough in the minutes that people who were not there can understand what is going on in the record. I also would say that I've noticed a lot of cities now are putting the videos of their meetings on their local access channels. I think most small towns are doing that now. And I would encourage, you know, hey, yeah, let's cut back on the minutes and let's air the meetings on the local access, we've got it, you know, it's technology, we may as well use it, I think that'd be a great idea. And the rest of my list for tonight, I'm gonna let go.
Anyone else to press?
First of all, Terry Francis again, 509 North Second Avenue. I just want to publicly commend the city employees for their work that they've been doing on the city streets and as far as the guttering systems and doing that all on themselves. They're doing an excellent job of that. I just wanted to just publicly acknowledge that, and I also wanted to acknowledge the fact that our city won an award for our water, and I just thought maybe Skip would like to know that that was something that maybe you might be interested in since comments were made earlier about the condition of our water. So that's another plus I see for the employees of the city, so just a good job, and I just want everybody to realize that they have been doing a good job, from my vantage point. To just address was the fact that our road use fund, if I read the accounts payable correctly, has $5,414 in it. Just this last month, we had to incur a cost of $2,170 for some new loader tires, okay? Since it doesn't seem that we're going to be seeing $12,000 for a while, you know, a couple more expenses to that degree, it's gonna make this street department really close on equipment needs, and we're gonna be going into winter here real quick unfortunately, which means possible increase in outlay in that fund. So I just wanted to bring that to the attention of those that may not know where that total is for the road use fund. I think that's quite low, because that's where we do all of our street improvements and stuff, and so it looks to me like it's imperative that that get done so that we can get those funds, so that there could be some plans made for next spring for maybe some repairs of some streets. Thank you.
Terry, I have a question for you. Which number were you looking at for what the fund had? It says off the claims register.
Yeah, it's on your, on third page. Gives your general fund outlay, and then it goes into the road use and the outlay for the previous month. That's page three of your packet.
It's number page two though.
What's that?
It's page two of the document.
It says page one at the top.
Several different pages here.
First page that I have is, just starts with the check numbers that are issued, and then that second page, and then it gives a balance.
Are those balances though Marilyn, if those are what we've got for checks, right? There were seven?
That's what, that's what the outlay was, right?
That's the outlay, right.
Okay, so what's, then the balance is? Oh, so we don't really know what the balance is, because we haven't reconciled the account? Oh, well, how about that? Okay, well, I guess there's no sense of talking about that, if you guys don't know what the balance is.
Well, I just wanted to know which numbers, like, and try to look them up for you and see where we're at for you.
Yeah, I think that would be good, if the people know what the balance is, if that's feasible. Usually it was up until July.
Yeah, Janice will be helping them out when she comes to. Thank you Terry. Andrew?
Andrew Francis, 111 North First Avenue. I was just thinking about some of the things with the minutes and cutting back on the printing costs, which is a good idea, and then Jim talked about airing things on public access. Is that something that the council would need to approve that, or the council would need to approve that? Okay. Is public access, is there a charge for that, or how does that work?
I think that it's built into just, I don't think that there's any charge for it, I think we've just gotta find a medium that we can use to put it on there. Right now, is it just VHS? Oh, it's DVD now, okay. So we'd be able to find a way to burn a DVD, okay.
So then, does that, is that a decision the council has to make before that can happen?
Yes, we actually need to vote on it.
Okay, then I guess, then my next question is, are the, is the council in favor of that? Just off the top of your head right now? I mean, you're not voting on it, but what are your thoughts on that?
There were discussions on it, the cost, basically would be recording cost would be the only cost that I remember came up, finding somebody and there was an attempt to go out and, limited attempt to go out and try and provide that service force.
So, without taking action as far as getting recording equipment, that's not gonna happen, basically? Is that what you're saying?
That was a little debt, yeah, hiring somebody, contracting somebody, buying it ourselves, all the costs were out on the day.
And then, and then what? Okay, so you're saying that can't be done? You being a favorite? What about you guys?
I mean, we could look at the costs first to see which way, what we would, how we would want to, whether we'd wanna buy our own stuff or whether we hire somebody.
So this is purely a cost measure and, totally a cost measure, okay. Then I would guess, is there a way that private citizens can air anything on public access?
That, I don't know.
Who's, who would, I mean, I don't know, that's what I, is, who would know that?
I don't either.
Churches, well churches were there.
Churches are nonprofit, I know, so that's how.
I mean, who's in charge of that? I don't even know. Long Lines is actually in charge of our public access?
Yeah, that's who we go through with.
They provide it, but, okay, I don't.
We're in charge of it.
We're in charge of it, it's here in the office, isn't it?
Right, it's just putting it in, in the office, yeah. So we can set a time.
I mean, yeah, so it's entirely up to us who's DVD gets put in and all that, right? Okay, then can I, as a private citizen, air my copies of council meetings?
I know that you can videotape them, as far as a private citizen's getting on, I don't know. I can check it out, as far as a private citizen using it, I would have to check, I don't know.
It's up to you.
I mean, yeah, it's ours.
Yeah, we own the system.
Oh, okay. I didn't know if there were restrictions on what we can put on it or not. I would say we need to bring it up for vote and then we can set a time.
You need to bring it up for vote for my private, air anything I want to put on it?
I don't think we've ever had anybody ask privately to put anything on before, other than churches, so.
I think an issue to come up would be, that would probably need to be reviewed, we don't know what's going on, probably want to look at it, if that's all it is.
It's just the, yeah, it's just the complete recording of a council meeting, that's all?
We hate to put something on there that would be accountable for, even if it was put on there accidentally, the horse or in the end was reviewed.
Okay, so who would I need to provide those to?
Does anybody have time to watch those?
I'm sorry, do you want?
We would probably be able to, a lot of times you could just probably flip through, you know, and fast forward, so.
Yes, it would be on DVD.
Like I say, we've got to check, I would love to do it, but we can't make a decision since it wasn't on the agenda. As far as, I mean, as far as, as far as the citizen doing it, that's what I don't know, because I don't know how we've got everything set up.
I guess I don't understand what you don't...
I know we own the system, I don't know if there's any restrictions of what we can put on or not.
Well, who would restrict it?
Well, I guess I don't know, that's just what I want to make sure for something.
If the city controls it.
Nikki Allen, 603 West Fifth Street, 311 East Seventh Street, and my current address is 2610 Niagara Trail. I would actually like to ask the council, before they adjourn tonight, if they would go back to agenda item number nine and vote on the park board as individuals rather than a group, because there's obviously enough people that have turned in their papers to make a park board. Brittany does not need to do this by herself, and I also think any of you can be honorary park board members, so if Brittany does have to do this by herself, please show up and support her. Council members, please go back to appoint park board members, agenda item number nine.
I think there's any way, we can go back, I don't know.
It's your meeting, go back, get it over with.
But we've already had a vote on that, that item, so, and I guarantee, I also would love to have it over with, so.
And will it be on the next agenda?
Yes, it will be on the next agenda. Rick O'Neill.
Yeah, it was Rick O'Neill, 701 Glen Road. I don't know the procedure on council or the mayor's duties or what, but I thought the mayor's obligation was to break the tie. No? Okay, that was one of my comments.
Thank you, I have no voting powers.
Pam Lavi at 207 North First Avenue. I think the comment that Nikki made was the point that you block voted for the six new park board members, and she's suggesting, since the motion was for six, how about voting on them individually, so that if there's anyone that you have a problem with, then there's others that can be replaced. But what you did is, the motion was for the six, retaining one, voting six, and her suggestion, I think, makes a whole lot of sense, and it would save a whole lot of time and effort and aggravation.
I haven't read the book. I just got in the books for Robert's Rules of Order, so I'll have those prepared tomorrow. That's up to you, I guess. I don't know that once you leave an agenda item, if you can go back to it or not, because I've never been asked that before. And so I asked for a little leeway, because sometimes, I mean, you've gotta remember, a lot of these situations that we're coming up in, I've never dealt with before, and that's over 10 and a half years of council.
I just, I understand, we understand you haven't dealt with these issues, but it's meeting after meeting, it's a little leeway here, a little leeway here, a little leeway here, next week, next meeting, next meeting, next meeting, nothing's happening. We don't hear, there's no reply, there's no, oh, we're working on this, at next meeting, we will have an update, and then there's an update. There's nothing happening.
And that's what we said, somebody asked me the question if it would be on the next agenda, and yes, it will be on the next agenda. the next agenda, and yes, it will be on the next agenda, and I think that now we know to, if we try to block the whole thing, we would, and then the vote doesn't go, that we would go individually through each item or through each, each member, so.
Susan Bonham, 1010 Skyline Drive. You know, I mean, you want to do everything perfectly, but you know, if you would let us interject during your agenda time, we could have, I could have told you, you know, you could have, you could have stopped, or anybody could have said, why don't you do this individually, but you won't let us make any comments until...
The end.
Comments? You know? And yes, you can go back and revisit that item.
I mean, that's up to you, Mike, if you want to go back, revisit that. I mean, this is the council's reading also, so if you want to make a motion.
I'd make a motion to go back.
Hold, hold on.
I would make a motion to go back to Agenda Item Number Nine, appoint park board members, and don't do it as a block, but do it individually.
Hey, I know that you made a motion, but we're actually just going back to Agenda Item Number Nine, so, and reopen again. So Mike's made a motion to go back to Agenda Item Number Nine.
I'll second it.
Let's go to the second, any other questions, comments? Councilmember Pfeifer.
Nay.
Councilmember Clark.
Nay.
Councilmember Johnson.
Nay.
Councilmember Bouch.
Oh!
Councilmember Crum.
Aye.
Motion to go back failed.
What if the man goes to go back?
But you don't...
Do I have?
Don't you know, motion to go back?
What happens when we come back next week and this happens again, or in the next two weeks?
Does the people change?
Yeah, I haven't moved on yet, so, all right, if you want to step up, ready?
What is going to happen next week, or the next meeting, when you guys decide to do the same thing over and over and over? Oh, God, I'm sorry, I forgot, you don't answer.
I live across the street.
Can we go to the seventh person? Do the deputy clerk's comments?
I had a, I had a call from the citizen the other day, and she just asked you guys to consider having more burning days in the fall, so she could get rid of her leaves, and, because it didn't work to, to burn on the first and the third Saturday, so.
Yeah, we've got on the next agenda to talk about this, so. Motion to adjourn? I'm going to adjourn in the center, if I call in favor.
Aye.
It's adjourned.